I just wanted to know, I know.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I'll have to take a picture.
Yeah, I may have to take it off.
All right, Joe's ready? All right. And at this point, we're going to call to order the Pacosa and Planning Commission for Monday, September 20th, 2021. And we are going to start off with the invocation, which Lee has volunteered to do tonight, and she has handed us some printouts that we can join her if you would like to leave. Please join me.
All right, please join me in a short prayer. Pray for all of us who hold positions of leadership and responsibility in our community life. Let your blessings rest upon us and make us responsive to your will. Help guide us in our decisions to seek fairness and reason. May our deliberations tonight be good governance on behalf of all our citizens who live here. Amen.
Thank you very much, Lee. And please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular session of August 16th, 2021. And if there are any questions, go ahead. Otherwise, if there's a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
He said, okay.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan? Commissioner Breeble, podcast. Commissioner Bieber?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman?
Aye.
Passes. Now, at this time, we'd like to open up the floor for an audience for visitors. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the Pacosa and Planning Commission for any topics besides what is on the public hearing. So if anybody would like to speak to the commission for anything other than the public hearing, now is your opportunity. And as I see none, I will close the audience for visitors. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which is a request for a conditional use permit by CBC Rentals LLC, owner and applicant, to convert office units to 10 residential living units apartments on the property located at 538 With Creek Road, Zoned B2 Business Commercial, Tax Map Parcel 18-1-59. And Thomas, do you have a presentation today?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. I have a short presentation for you tonight regarding the applicant. As you pointed out, Madam Chair, the applicant is CBC Rentals LLC, and the purpose of their conditional use permit is to convert office units to a maximum of 10 residential units or apartment units. The need for the conditional use permit is that the applicant is requesting permission to convert eight office units into a maximum of 10 residential units. A conditional use permit is necessary because residential units or apartments are not a permitted use in the B2 district. Here you can see the location indicated by the arrow. Just for reference, that building across the street, it's Dominion Village, and this is the current space where Marquee Homes has their office spaces. Picture, a quick picture of the exterior. On the left, you can see the front of the building. The right is the side, obviously, where the office spaces are accessed currently. Here's the other side of the building. And here are just, I'll say, conceptual pictures. What you're looking at right now is office spaces, but if you could imagine that these areas would be converted to living areas, living spaces, you know, just sitting areas if they were to become apartments. Here are restrooms. The one on the left is just a typical restroom that the business has, or the building has, I'll say, in some of its office spaces. The one on the right is a full bath that one of the office spaces actually has, full shower, toilet sink, and for all intents and purposes, is a full bath. These are two other spaces within the offices that you can imagine would become bedrooms. These other spaces within the offices vary in size, but this gives you a decent idea. Here are, I have two floor plans. Here's the first one submitted by the applicant. Again, conceptual, but how he can, you know, remodel those office spaces and convert them to living areas. Here's another floor plan. Of course, you have those in your packet as well. Sure, it'll be easier for you to see. There are four conditions of the permit as presented by staff. The first is one that's pretty general for all permits. It's that they must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. The second is that no more than 10 residential dwelling units shall be created upon the issuance of a conditional use permit. Like I said, there's eight doors, eight office spaces, you could say, but a condition of permit is that a max of 10 could be created. That doesn't necessarily mean the applicant's going to create 10, but that's the maximum that this permit will allow. If at any time the specified permit use on the property is discontinued for a period of two years or more, the permit shall become null and void. And of course, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. That concludes my presentation, Madam Chair, and I will be happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Yeah, I have some question. You're asking to have residential people in a business area where other businesses are conducting business at all hours, and that kind of is like a no-no. The other part is, if you're going to be renting these units, you're going to be renting them for a year or two years, and what if there is a problem and the conditional use permit, what are we going to do with these people? It's not a very flexible situation at all. So those are my concerns right now, is that normally, even when I was renting apartments, you sign a lease for a year. And if this turns into something where people are complaining because of noise from the street or what, no parking, loud noises, God knows what, and they revoke it, then what are you going to do with the people who you've given leases to?
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens, I'd tell you, that's, you know, probably some questions that the applicant can address, but, you know, we've taken the permit as applied for and, you know, presented it as we received it. And if I can answer any direct questions to the application, I'll certainly do that.
I had a question about if we have children in the facility and what would be the proposal for outdoor opportunities and activities? I believe you've had a discussion with Mr.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you know, currently, it's, there's, it's not proposed with the application. And, you know, if we assume that we apply the R3 code to apartments or multifamily uses, that part of the code doesn't require recreational or community areas either, but it wasn't included as part of the application, ma'am.
Is there a problem renting the units to business units right now? I mean, is this where Marquee Homes was?
It is the current place Marquee Homes is, but we've been, just through discussions with the applicant, he has conveyed to staff that there's a trouble, there's a problem renting these units to businesses.
Size of this property, do you know?
Total acreage or just the building itself?
No, the land that it's on, how much land is with?
I don't have the exact figure for you. I'm sure the applicant may.
I'm just curious to know what is the size of that area that this, that the office buildings are on? Person here representing can probably tell us.
Yes, ma'am.
When he comes up if his talk.
Any other questions for Thomas? Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you very much. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to address or make comments on the public hearing item, now is an opportunity. If you do come up, please state your name and address.
Hi, members of the planning commission. My name is Roger Mabon. I am, I own CBC Rentals. I also own Marquee Homes. I've been living, we've lived in Pacosa since 1984. The office building was built by my father-in-law, Robert Bunting, back in the probably late 90s or early 90s. When he passed away, my wife and I bought the building, probably 1999. We moved our office up to this location from our home-based office. And for years, we tried to rent office space to other businesses in Pacosa. Had a little bit of success, but not a lot over the years. Our last tenant was a hairdresser. They signed a five-year lease, and at the end of the five-year lease, they moved back up to the shopping center. So we have had difficulties over the years renting to other commercial businesses. So we thought, my son, a couple weeks ago, said, you know, Dad, we probably should turn this into residential apartments or flats, you know, small efficiencies or one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartments. So I thought it was a great idea. So that's the, to your question on the lot size, it's a little over an acre, I think, Thomas, I think.
That sounds right.
And then as far as parking goes, I don't remember the number of parking spots, but we have a sufficient amount of parking to handle 10 apartments. I think it was two per apartment plus one or two extra ones for every four or something. I forget the numbers. So we have plenty of spots, and then we have plenty of room in the back if we were to get to a certain level of occupancy that we could convert to some recreational area. And to your question about what happens when people are unhappy, we manage a number of rental properties that I own, and everybody signs a lease, everybody's thoroughly vented, make sure that they qualify based on our leasing standards. So we don't have a lot of problems with occupancy and things like that. So we've been very, very fortunate, very successful in that regard. If I can answer any more questions, I'll be delighted to.
With eight spaces currently, how are you proposing 10 residential units? Are you cutting in new doors?
We were going to, if you go to the very first slide on the front, we've had a couple conceptual drawings done. And then our plan was to cut a door in the front to do an efficiency sidewalk around. Can you go to the floor plans, the proposed floor plans? That's an existing floor plan, which is of the front office, and that's the existing of the first and second office, and then go to the next one, Thomas. That's the proposed of the front two. So we would do a sidewalk around to an efficiency apartment and then a one-bedroom in the first suite. And then the next suite, where our rental office is currently located, we would do a living room, little kitchenette, two bedrooms. And then we would, as we occupied, we would move to the next unit. Of course, we have to meet the building code. We have to satisfy Ken and his group with regard to fire ratings and things like that, and we plan to do all that. Obviously, the bedrooms have to have windows, so those windows will be cut in the back. Currently, the back of the building is all brick, so we would have to cut in windows for the proper degress and things like that. We'll meet all of those codes.
Are these short-term rentals or long-term rentals?
Well, we would, minimum of a year, we don't do any short-term rentals.
Efficiency of basically a studio, it looks like, for that first one.
Say again?
I said, I wouldn't want to live in an efficiency for long periods of time. There's a younger population that may enjoy that.
Well, Thomas showed you pictures of my office. I practically live there now, but.
And there are probably some older people that are on their own, maybe one person, that may like that.
Yes, ma'am.
That might be a possibility. They wouldn't have children or have need for a lot. Have any of the surrounding business owners commented about this application?
Pretty much looking at all the surrounding business centers.
I, um.
Okay, so, yeah.
We pretty much have the whole building.
Okay, but I mean, any of the, you know, the ones that?
I received one call from one of his neighbors, I believe, at 540 With Creek, where the imaging business is. And he wasn't necessarily a concern, but his question was, if apartments were to be constructed or remodeled to fit the building, would there be a fence in between his business and Mr. McCollum's building there? Code wouldn't require that to happen, and I told him if it was something, you know, he'd like to have, then he should, you know, speak with Mr. McCollum directly about it. But that's all I've received about the application.
And I can see where somebody, you know, living or working next to it may want that. That might, that was sort of thoughts also. I'm going to make a couple of notes. The area, certainly some apartments in it, of course, is. There are, it is some, certainly, I mean, that area has apartments.
Yes, ma'am. That's where I would say that currently overwhelming majority of our R3 district, our apartments are very close in proximity to this one.
My question, and Ms. McCollum, thank you so much for all your contributions to Pacosa. You've just been a wonderful business to have here and name everywhere on very high-quality buildings, so thank you for that. My question, I guess, is in terms, I do have reservations, I'll be honest, about converting from a commercial district to a residential. We hear a concern, obviously, about, you know, our citizens being able to have a good quality of life and wherever they might choose to live in us, the. My concern was the constraints of the property. How many entrance and exit doors are you anticipating? I noticed a side yard at the back of the building. Are you anticipating entrances coming from that side, or will they all open from the front? That side, is there any proposals for an entrance from that side of the building?
I would, I would only enter from the front. I don't think I'd want to, I think I've only got about six or eight feet on the side yard.
Right.
Where the compressors are, so there's not a lot of room in the back.
So all entrances would be from the front, from the current parking lot?
Yes.
Would be the, would be the main entrance to each of these apartments?
Yes.
Okay. And I will express concern. I'm, you know, being a grandmother, I'm very, you know, concerned about safety of children. And even for the elderly people, if that was converted to residential, that they have some space that would be, you know, available for recreation or sitting or whatever, rather than coming straight out onto a parking lot. I know there's trees on the side. Could you walk us through the potentiality for the storage area that you currently have at the end of the property that could be utilized as part of some, either green space or whatever? I know the, it's a very strange map, but the triangle piece to the right is actually owned by the daycare center, so there's going to be children playing out, I guess, within that fenced area. So your property has a little triangle storage area at the back, so do you see the potential for that to be some way for?
Yeah, Thomas mentioned that you may have a concern about that, and my response to that was, once we get to five or more apartments leased, then we would convert a portion of the back into a recreational area.
And about how big is that little triangle? Do you stop the copy?
It's a pretty good size.
Okay.
There's also a little triangular piece of property across our parking lot that we could convert that promptly. I could put a picnic table out there in a grassy area, we could do that immediately. That'd be pretty easy to do.
I want to agree that, that the, Mr. McCollum actually does spectacular work. He actually repaired my house, and his quality of standards is excellent. And it's not so much the idea of creating good livable space in apartments, it's the idea of a residential area in a business B2 area. That's the only thing that I worry about. And there are other concerns about the availability of other space other than the apartments themselves. I mean, you walk out and you've got a parking lot and your cars are on the other side. And I've been in that building. I met with you, and it's a nice building, it really is. And I don't think there's any question as to whether you're going to be able to meet all the standards and everything else. I really think it resides with the fact of residential units being converted. And you're right, you've got a problem in that, okay, the businesses aren't coming, and they're not coming over there at where, yeah, the, behind the, where the corner bistro used to be.
Fountains?
Yeah, the fountains. I mean, they can't rent what they got, and they can't get permissions to even go forward with it. I mean, it's going to be a tough area to rent when there's other rental spaces that are available right now, in the fountains, and they can't even rent those. So I am concerned about the fact that we're converting business to residential, but I understand why you're doing it, and if you do do it, it's going to be done. It's going to be done right.
Yes, sir. Well, I will tell you, that's the most expensive conditioned storage space in, I think, on the peninsula. My wife has so much furniture stored in that building that, quite frankly, I'd like to purge that and start making it income-producing property, because right now it's not. I'm the only person paying rent there, Marquee Homes, so.
I guess, you know, and certainly family-owned business, you've got lots of flexibility in terms of, you know, looking at your decision-making. One of the things that came out when we did our comprehensive plan was, we have a number of home businesses, and I think we're all facing the COVID reality, that people now are working from home. The social isolation is getting to a lot of folks, and I think we're at the point now where these collaborative workspaces that could be rented on a, you know, on a casual basis seem to be a trend in other areas, and I didn't know. I'm all about trying to assist our next generation of business owners, quite frankly, and that, you know, if we can reach back and provide some opportunity for them in low-rent, you know, affordable spaces, that that may give them the leg up to their next phase of their business development. We were very, very thrilled last meeting to grant mayor's exterminating a permit to build a brand-new building, and that's an opportunity where a young business is growing through good ethics and good work, to the point where they are, you know, able to build. And that's going to be, that's in that phase, that's in that corridor where you currently locate. So I have reservations also in turning the building into a residential, when maybe with some creativity and some maybe a little bit more thinking about the potential market in the commercial area, office space, whatever we want to call it, and perhaps doing a little bit more due diligence as to are there potential young business owners here in Pacosa that could benefit from, you know, I would say grade-A office space, but certainly office space that could accommodate their needs.
What I will tell you, over the years, we've tried to be extremely creative in that back of the building. We set those up as individual offices with a common space in the middle that a young businessperson could rent an office space for as little as $300 a month. We have, you know, we had a few takers over the years. You know, one kid pulled in, and next thing I know, he was living there, and we had to put a stop to that, because that back office has a shower, and we would drive by in the evenings, and his car's still there, 10 o'clock at night. So that wasn't the intent of a $300 room. That's not what we were trying to do. So we quickly got rid of him. Nice thing about commercial is you don't have to go through all the notices and so forth, you just change the locks when they don't pay. That's kind of cool. Residential's a lot harder to evict somebody. But we've tried that. We tried the individual office renting. We just were unsuccessful. I think for a while, we had another construction company rent an office just so they had a space on this side, or from the south side, and they would visit the office, you know, once or twice a week and pick up paperwork or drop off samples or things like that. But we haven't had a lot of success with that over the years. We had CPA there for a number of years, and he moved next door to Don Taylor's building. The hairdresser was the last long-term tenant we had. They were there for five years, wasn't producing enough business income, and then moved it back up to the shopping center. So we've tried, I've been trying for 21 years to rent office space, and it's, we've been relatively unsuccessful.
One reason that that might be, and this is just speculation on my part, it is so much residential on your end, where your business. The businesses that are there are old businesses that have been there for a long time. I think Fodo Associates and Freeman's. But on your end of With Creek Road, that is a lot of residential. And it seemed like the business sort of left that end and went up, because at one time there was a little store down there, which was in town. And it just hadn't been that much business on that end. So that could be, I mean, that could be one thing that affects where your office is.
When my father-in-law owned that building, the front, he turned it into a laundromat, for goodness sakes.
I remember that.
We've tried pretty much everything in that facility, so.
I remember Bob, he was a neighbor of my family down on Leyden Way. But I don't know, I can see where it would be some problem probably with getting a business to locate there. Area, I think, where it is.
Well, my son's wanting to move out, and I'm fighting that tooth and nail. They want me to be in a nice, beautiful location in city center, New Bernews, and I'm saying, I'm no, I'm staying right in the business. I can be to work in five minutes, you know? So that's kind of where I'm, you know, where we're at on this.
Do you have an idea approximately what the rentals would, what you would charge for the rentals, for the, you know, various, there's the efficiency up to the multi-bedroom?
You know, I haven't really analyzed that. I know some of the properties across the street. We own a number of town villas, a number of the townhouses. I don't have any apartments in Pacosa, and I don't own any smaller apartment-type properties, but the housing, the cost would be affordable, and they would not be in disrepair, they would be in top-notch condition.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you for speaking. Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any concerns? Is anyone ready to make a motion on this application?
Like I said earlier, all the conditions are fine, and I don't believe there'll be an issue creating these apartments. My only issue is the fact that it's not a really residential area to be putting families in and stuff like that. It's a fine building. residential area to be putting families in and stuff like that. It's a fine building. I, I understand where, you know, Roger's coming from, but I still don't think we ought to convert it to residential units. But I, I have no idea what you could do. I mean, obviously, it's a concern.
Yeah. And, you know, it's definitely, in our purview, if we did want to recommend a condition about putting the recreation area when there's five or more units, I tend to agree with you. I think that the residential, the B2, we're just looking at the right use in the right place and it's a different purpose. I do definitely sympathize not being able to rent those out and the, the trouble, especially at that end of town. But don't necessarily see a compelling reason to, for the city to approve or to recommend approval for the conditional use permit to turn that residential. But that being said, if, if the commission didn't want to institute other condition, bit better, to make it a better fit, that's always an option. Comments? Questions?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I have concerns, again, not for, I, I guess for the reasons in terms of, of flipping our, our designated commercial spaces. We're facing, obviously, a lot of gentrification that's going on with our older buildings. Bakosan being small, you know, where do we draw the line on our zoning? I mean, it's, you know, we draw, draw a line in the sand. And the discussion, for example, last, at the last month's meeting about mayor's was that the side of the street that your proposal is located is a transition zone. And so, if we start to flip into residential, then I can see where, you know, that would have a, an impact on your other commercial businesses in that area. And I think, you know, we're, get down to the mayor's new property, we're close to the fire station. And I see that as being a very clear definition of the end of the commercial zone. Now, we can look across the street and obviously, we've done lots of multifamily. And that was a discussion because of the ingress and egress. So, I, I would urge you maybe to do a little bit more digging, so to speak. Maybe meet with the, with the people to see if there's some, are businesses that might be currently located in town that are home based businesses that... I, I do also have reservations about the condition.
Reviewing the image on the screen, two buildings in either direction and you hit residential. A residential home, a few doors, not, not too far from where mayor's new building will go. You go two buildings closer towards City Hall and that's another small apartment complex that has been there for years. You're splitting hairs about the business versus residential for the building just across the street, the convalescence center.
But it's residential.
That's why, well, he's, he's applying for a condition permit, which is why, you know, so.
I think there is a growing need in the city for younger residents and maybe younger families without children that don't need a lot of space, more pedestrian-based traffic up and down With Creek Road. That was the premise between the mixed-use property where the fountains are. So, where I would not want to live in a efficiency studio style or a one-bedroom. I'm, I'm past that point in my life, I would imagine. But I can see where there's a need for that, for the younger people, just graduating college, trying to move back to the area, young military, you know, E2, E3, just get stationed at one of the military bases around, could, could benefit from this. So, I'm not opposed to it. That's my opinions on it.
And I'm, I'm thinking about older people. I'm thinking about somebody that's a widow, maybe that has had to move from Bakosan because some of the other places were maybe a little bit bigger or more than what they could afford. And I have certainly known people that would have liked to have had a little efficiency. They, they just didn't need a two-bedroom, three-bedroom. And, I mean, I kind of feel a little bit like you do in that respect. And the fact that, I mean, we have a conditional use permit process which allows us to, I think if this, this were located in a different area, I probably would be more in agreement with, with Mr. Where it is, is the location is what I'm thinking about. And I agree that it is very close to residential. And I just don't, I don't, personally, I don't see a lot of activity on that end with business. I know that's just something that I've noticed over a period of time. It's not much up there. It's, it's just like on Bakosan Avenue, over time, the big, big whoop in Dr. Riggins' store was. And Riggins' motor, as time has progressed, we had two banks there, but it's all, that's all changed, changed. So, I, you know, I, I kind of, I wonder, I, I didn't ask you this, but what, what is, what is plan B? Have you been thinking that far ahead? If, I mean, is there any other possibility that you have in mind or in thinking about? Probably not fair to ask you that with, with this presentation on the tape. Because really, I've been trying to sit here and think of something that you could do with it. I mean, you, you've got a situation. I understand your situation. Building there that really, I mean, at some point, would it be torn down and just sold as a lot? Come up if you will, if you don't mind. I mean...
Yeah. We really don't have a plan B. As I said, my, my sons want me to move out of Bakosan and move our business and make, up on George Washington Memorial Highway, perhaps. I own a building up there. I'm just not willing to do that. It's, you know, I've got my roots here. I'm a move-in, but they're all from here. My, you know, my kids are all from Bakosan, so. And I'm still considered a move-in, so. But I've lived here longer than they have. But Debbie and I are not willing to do that. We're, we're staying right here. Matter of fact, she just sold my house. And so, I had a move and I kid around. She's moved me into a shanty. We moved out of the, the house I raised my kids in and we moved into a much smaller residence over on Forest Road. But our plan is to stay. Got the Lord, good Lord willing, when I want it where. And as far as the office building goes, I can't tear it down. I have a big mortgage on it. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not something we can do.
Right.
So, I've got to make, I've got to make that dog hunt, so to speak. And we've got to figure out how to, to make some money.
Yeah.
But I'll tell you, a couple doors down, first lane, same situation. You've got a four-plex apartment that's been there, operating in the same zoning district, you know, right across from the car wash.
Right.
For 20 or 30 years.
A long time.
And...
Very long time. Yeah.
So, that's, that's kind of, a gal that works for me on the, on the rental side, I, we hired her, got her out of the trailer park and got her in a, a, a beautiful rental house we converted on Messick Road. And it's a beautiful house, single gal that lives by herself, has, has a little dog. Perfect location for her. You know, she doesn't need, she doesn't need the yard to maintain. So, there are lots of, there are a lot of people in the population that are by themselves or older, would, would want to live independently. I think this would, you know, solve some of that problem. And as you know, housing, you can't rent a unit today. There's nothing out there, you know, affordable housing. So, that's, I think it's a little bit of an answer to that, too.
Eddie, prepare to make a motion. Either with the request as is, put in any additional conditions, recommend conditions?
I would like to make a motion to recommend a condition added of five units or more rented for some common outdoor space. Don't know what that looks like, but you know, in the, towards the end, more than just a picnic table in the grass across from the parking lot, but something where people could socialize more outside of their... That was acceptable to city staff.
Madam Chair, if I could speak to that. Well, and I, we're actually speaking today in anticipation of a condition of that nature. And frankly, when it comes to apartments, one occupancy certificate is issued for the whole thing. So, staff will have no way to know when that fifth apartment is leased. You know, I don't think anything precludes you from making a decision on, you know, good faith that Mr. McClellan does it, you know, on his, on his own when he gets to that fifth apartment. But there's just no way really for city staff to account for when he leases his fifth apartment.
Yeah, we won't know when.
So, I guess a question would be legally speaking, is that a condition that we can even implement on here? As far as definition of recreational area, is this the type of condition that can be implemented?
Certainly.
Can I amend my recommendation and just with the addition, amend it to adding as a condition, a recreational space. And that way, if he rents one unit or if he rents all 10, there'll be a recreational space. And those that, that jump on the bandwagon early and, and get the first couple spots will have somewhere to have a grill or, or have a picnic outside there on the property.
Tell you, in, in answer to Thomas and Wally's concerns about when they would know the fifth one, you can make that a condition and it would, the review of it is covered by the current number four, which city council can review and amend it at any time. So, they happen to see or hear somebody say, oh, yeah, they got the fifth one in, the council can say, let's double-check that and follow them on the, on that condition. So, that's certainly, while they wouldn't automatically know when the fifth one was rented, is what they're saying. But if somebody were to certainly say, hey, I think they've got the fifth one in, then I don't think Mr. McClellan's going to hide the fact. I mean, he wants it full, so I don't think he's going to try and trick the city with any of that stuff. But to answer your question, yes, you can certainly make that a condition and it would be protected, I think, or at least be able to be enforced with the current number four.
What about the, the adjoining neighbor, property owner suggesting fencing? Would that be another?
If it's not a requirement under the code, that's something that, that they could work out between themselves.
Work out between the neighbor and, and...
Correct. If, if they decided that they wanted to put up a fence to help delineate the two properties or provide...
Separate the two properties, one is commercial, one residential.
Right. Or, or to provide privacy for the residents or the other business. That is something they could certainly discuss between themselves and provided they follow whatever, you know, I don't think we have too many codes as regards to fences, but it would not be a requirement, as Thomas said, for the permit itself or for, for the property. But that's certainly something that he's not barred from putting up a, chose to do that.
Question for the planning department is, if I recall, with mayors, wasn't that part of the city ordinance that they had to, wasn't there a fencing ordinance? So, would that be applicable here as well?
It wouldn't be because the zoning would still be B2. The reason mayors had to erect the fence was that if they were the line, as Commissioner Fenixson pointed out earlier, that next door is residential. So, by virtue of the building there, then they would have to put up the fence. But this wouldn't be the case because this would still be B2. I can add, Madam Chair, if, you know, as part of the proposed condition, you can make that, you know, contingent upon the issuance of a, see if that's the desire of the board.
To reiterate, I would like to add a fifth amendment to include a recreational area to the proposed Resolution A for conditional use permit in 538.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments before we take the roll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
We're just doing the, added item on the request. Is that correct?
I believe it's approved with the...
So, you're asking right now, are we going to approve this conditional use with the additional thing? No.
Commissioner Fenixson?
I'm going to vote no with, with...
This is, this is definitely, this is definitely one that coming in and hearing everyone's arguments, I definitely can see absolutely both sides of this. Absolutely. That being said, I am going to say no. Thank you. Now, we are just a recommending body. This will go in front of city council. They, of course, have the final decision. So, that will be coming up probably here in the... Oh, yes, that's true. Thank you. Yes. So, that motion failed. So, is there another motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we deny the conditional use permit.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever? Commissioner Shriver?
No.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Motion passes. And again, this will go in front of city council. All right. And the next item on the agenda is new business and the election of officers. Very much for your time. We have this yearly. I was hoping that we would have at least one more member here. We do not, but we do know that this is time to elect new officers. So, if anybody has any thoughts or wants to make a motion for officers.
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate Angie for chair, Bonnie Shriver, vice-chair, Erin Mixon as clerk, and Ryan Bromel for deputy clerk.
I'll second that motion.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever? Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is for communications and correspondence. Is there anything that is upcoming or anything that can, applications coming up, anything like that?
Well, we've got a few subdivision applications. I don't know anything coming to y'all next week, next month, except for maybe Mr. Moses. A lot of talk about the fountains today. Mr. Moses is going to meet with us tomorrow. And essentially, he needs to amend his conditional use permit to more accurately reflect what he wants to do. Essentially, what he wants to do is he wants to be able to do phase four before he's really done anything on phase three. But like I said, I'll talk to Mr. Moses a little bit more tomorrow about it. And, but my feeling is that we'll probably... my feeling is that we'll probably, if he can get his materials in by the end of this week, my feeling is that we'll probably have him in October. That would be the upcoming, upcoming hearings. I just wanted to let the planning commission know that the amendments to land development districts and PDB and UU and PBDW, which is basically land use- Land use development, waterfront, as well as the definitions, are all passed by the city council. So, one hurdle down. We'll be looking at the next several months, probably some legal changes with the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, basically changes in state code that we need to reflect. It's what we have to do, essentially. So, but, but you'll be getting a look at it.
I don't have anything additional, Madam Chair, I just, I do want to say from a staff perspective, it's, you know, nice getting y'all the materials early and being able to facilitate your questions, you know, in advance of meetings. Want to tell all of you, don't, you know, hesitate to call or email us with, with questions that you have, you know, that we may be able to cover before we meet, but that's all, Madam Chair.
I appreciate that, too. I know it's been very helpful, and it was really nice to have the agenda package a couple of days earlier and be able to give you a call. Thank you. Great.
Last meeting, I talked about school starting, and school has started, and it's still a very fluid situation in my household with children in the school system. I want to commend the city as a whole for continuing to work. With COVID, some of the numbers have been increasing in the region and have been affecting operations in certain businesses, even to the state level, and the staff still relatively seamlessly. I'd like to commend all city staff, and to remind people that school buses are out there, and be mindful of the little ones.
Nelson?
Okay.
Lee?
I have three items. I am looking at the opportunity for a placemaking pocket park that, on the corner of West Creek and Victory. I understand there's some discussions about the reuse of the old Wells Fargo building, and I'm concerned about the, the, the area that we currently have, Community Christmas Tree that extends to that corner where the Kiwanis has its barbecue, and we have all kinds of community events there, and whether there might be an opportunity, certainly don't need any discussion right now, but maybe looking at the opportunity of somehow having some collaboration with the, with the proposed new owner to, to create some public space there. It is the front door of our, our community. I think you've all heard me express concerns in the past about the weed and the overgrown, abandoned sign. I just think it's time that we need to have something that would really celebrate Bacosa's heritage in, in a major way that, that, you know, could give that unique marker to our community incoming visitors and a sense of community pride for, for our citizens. The other two items, I was approached by a citizen concerned about the amount of, the number of lots that are becoming elevated in the community by bringing in filled dirt, and this, I think, is going to be something that will continue as we all face, you know, the sea level rise issue, waterfront community. And I questioned Mr. Somerset about what, what requirements we have in terms of compression. On my side of town, we're basically, you know, we live on the marsh, do have the Chesapeake Bay Act, but there is, you know, a number of people who are concerned about the flooding issue and are wanting to fill their land, basically. He assured me that there are compression tests that are conducted, and that has to be fitted by the potential builders, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And the, literally, the runoff from those, from this question of elevated lots is the drainage that affects the neighborhood. As we know, when we have, you know, big storms, because we're pretty low and flat, there's not a lot of grade, and with these elevated lots, neighbors are very easily flooded out with the runoff from the elevated next door. He assured me that, you know, swales are also considered, but I just want, again, want to mention that this may be an ongoing issue that more and more citizens may be facing. And the third item is, I ended a, well, a virtual, virtual conference last week that was sponsored by a group that had officials from every jurisdiction talking about, you know, what they're doing about creating sustainable communities. And as you know, our, the very first page on our comprehensive plan talks about Bacosa becoming a sustainable community. And I was blown away with what some other localities are doing. Very proud of Ms. O'Connell's representation of Bacosa and the things that we're doing individually here to come on board. And so, it was a really, really good conference. One of the issues that came up was the ordinance, and the direct question, Wally, I guess, we, do we have an ordinance by right for solar panels on residential, commercial, and city build? And if so, what is the liability for those panels during high wind events? Again, I'm concerned about neighbors' damage.
Well, I don't know if I can answer all those questions, but I can say we allow solar panels on individual-
By right, by right.
Individual establishments.
Okay.
I think some of the homeowners associations have that written in, that they can't do that, because if you see one house with a whole bunch of stuff on the front of it, it, it's going to make it look unpleasant for the rest of it. So, it, for those that have HOAs, you, you just can't, you know, do that without going through a review.
Sure, sure.
But it's, it's a great idea, I mean-
But, of course, building, you know, that'd have to meet the mill.
Yeah, again, I was more of a-
As Mr. Stevens has pointed out, we do it.
I question it's more of a, from a, you know, a son community safety issue rather than-
Well, I would say, just off the, not, I mean, I can ask it specifically for you tomorrow, but I would say that part of meeting building code is being resistant to wind, and I forget what the wind is around here, but it may be a little hot, but I think it's like eighty-five, ninety miles an hour, something of that nature. But I'll check with them and see exactly what that, that-
When I built a shed in the back of my property, and Ken came over, there were two things he wanted done. One was make sure that the foundation was anchored very carefully, and the other one was that I have hurricane clips on all the roof, so that the roof is, doesn't go flying off. And from what I've seen on these units that have the solar panels, they're very, very close to the roof. There's a little bit of space underneath it, but you're not like, you know, sitting up very high where you're going to get a lot of wind on-
Yeah, it would be, it would be hard for the wind to kind of, you know, yank on these-
Enough energy to get up there to pop off, but it would be nice to have a safety thing that says you have to be, you know, anchored pretty well.
I'm sure there's one out there, and I can, you know, I can send you by email, whatever I need to do.
Well, if they put a permit in for it, Ken, Ken is a stickler for that, so I'll tell you that right now. I, I won't be here for next month, I'll be in Denver, so I just wanted to give you a heads up. See my daughter.
Aaron?
Nothing.
Okay. I don't think I have anything either. So, with that being said, we are going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.